All right, let's get rolling. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's City of Tom Water Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, December 12, 2023. We're having a little bit of a late start. It's about 7:21 and we're starting now. So our meeting is called to order. I'll do a quick roll call here. Commissioner Edwards.
Present.
Great. Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Commissioner Schumacher. Mr. Staff.
Here.
Thank you. Vice Chair Tobias.
Here.
Great. Commissioner Varela.
Here.
Commissioner Von Holtz is excused, and me, I'm Commissioner Roberts. All righty, let's, any changes to the agenda tonight, aside from our time change? Not seeing any. Let's move on. Our fourth item is to cancel the December 26 meeting. Do we just declare that, or do we need an add?
We can do a vote.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Vice Chair Tobias, I move that we cancel the Planning Commission meeting scheduled for December 26, 2023.
Second.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick, all right. It's been moved and seconded to cancel our day after Christmas meeting for December 26. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Our meeting is canceled for that day. Happy holidays. Let's go to our meeting minutes. We've got two sets, one from a little while ago and one from the beginning in November. Any discussion, any revisions, any remarks, any motions?
I'll move to approval of minutes of September 26 and November 14.
Thank you.
Second.
Great, that was Commissioner Varela seconding. Still open, any remarks, changes? All right, not seeing any. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes for both sets, September 26 and November 14, 2023. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Our minutes from those two meetings are approved. Thanks very much. Any commissioners' reports? I think we'll be getting out a new schedule of our meetings, but effectively the same second and fourth Tuesdays, right? Or does somebody have their hand raised?
Letting you know there's an attendee.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, super. Okay, thanks, everybody. Brad, on our, on our meeting schedule, we are pretty much going to be our same second and fourth Tuesdays, right?
Correct. The meeting schedule, what I meant by that was the, what the agendas for upcoming meetings in 2024.
Yes.
So the new schedule is in your packet. Your first meeting will be January 9. We'll be doing a briefing on the floodplain ordinance. We'll be doing a briefing on the hazard mitigation plan resolution, and we'll be talking about the transportation element.
Very good. Very good. Need us a nice segue to the manager's report. Do you see anything else, Brad?
I have nothing more than probably what we already talked about.
Okay. I will go to general public comment. Yeah, go ahead. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Will the transportation element include, as I mentioned, a public transportation?
Yeah, it will. But probably the biggest change will be the addition of a bike and a pedestrian plan. So Mary Heather will be leading that discussion. But you're correct. This is our opportunity to again engage with the intercity transit folks about potential extension of the services, especially since we have new populations coming in on Little Rock and Highway 99 that weren't here in 2015.
I see is the major barrier between us having affordable housing in Tom Water is having no public transportation to speak of. So I would hope that we hit that early and hard.
Good deal. I'll move to general public comments before we get to our specific public hearing. There's one person online, it looks like Mr. Jerome Tuanyo from Jolt. If you'd like to make any general comments to the Planning Commission about our, kind of our general work and items within our purview, please go ahead. All right. We're not, if your sound is on, we're not picking up your sound for some reason.
Don't remove him, remove permission to talk. I thought I...
All right. Well, let's, let's move on to our public hearings tonight. We have two items, and I'm going to go through our process that we will use, and I think I can cover the process once for both, but we'll, but we'll see if, if anybody's confused, I'll go through it, through it all again. First of all, I want to welcome anybody in the audience, if we can't see you, that's just how Zoom works, but thanks for coming. I am Elizabeth Robbins, Chair of the Planning Commission, and our, the other planning commissioners you see around the table have, our, and our staff around the table are part of, who support our mission. The Planning Commission's role is to make recommendations and suggestions, and in general, we work as an advisory body to the city council. We do not make decisions for the city on our own. Let's see, tonight our, the purpose of our public hearing is to see if there's any public testimony on the subject of either our final docket for annual housekeeping amendments or the final docket for our 2023 comprehensive plan amendments.
Perhaps two separate hearings?
Yes.
But we'll start with...
Just the one.
Just comment on the development code.
Okay. You want to do the annual housekeeping amendments first?
Annual housekeeping amendments.
Okay. So we'll just do, we'll focus on that in case there's any confusion. And Brian will correct, or Brad will correct any confusion I have. Okay. And then when we, the actual public hearing will start with, when I actually declare that the public hearing is open, we'll hear from staff, a briefing on the topic. Then that'll give us, as commissioners, a chance to ask questions of staff. Then I will open public comment, public testimony formally. And then once that's done, if any, then I'll close the public hearing, and at that point we can move, move on. If there is anybody speaking, we want everybody to hear what you have to say, so be sure and speak clearly into the microphone. We're going to ask for names and addresses and any affiliations that speakers might have. The speakers are to address all comments to the Planning Commission as a body, and it has to be relevant to our topic. The first one being our annual housekeeping amendments. Let's see, not many people, if at all, so I will say if there's anybody speaking, we'll give them three minutes each to make any points they have. And not many, so I don't expect we'll have very many repetitive comments. And I think it should be clear that unruly behavior isn't, isn't desired and can be curtailed. So our, the ordinance before us tonight is going to be the ordinance number O-2023-012, the final docket for 2023 annual housekeeping amendments. And I will go ahead and say where we should begin. So I think this one is Erica's, right?
Yes, I'm Elizabeth Robbins. I'm going to go ahead and share the screen for everyone. So tonight we are discussing the 2023 annual development code housekeeping amendments. This is a public hearing. During 2022 and 2023, staff gathered information on minor to modern municipal code development code housekeeping items. The proposed amendments are intended to make minor corrections to the city's development code regulations. In total, there are four amendments proposed for the 2023 docket. The review process established is similar to the one that the city follows for the annual comprehensive plan amendments. So the process so far, on June 27 of this year, the Planning Commission was briefed on the proposed amendments. By 11, the Planning Commission had a work session and recommended items go forward to the GGC. On August 9, the General Government Committee, the GGC, agreed with the Planning Commission and added the items to the council's consent agenda. On September 5, the city council approved the preliminary docket. And on October 24, the Planning Commission had a briefing on the final docket, and on November 14, a work session. Public notice for tonight's hearing was issued on Friday, December 1. After tonight, the city council will consider the Planning Commission's recommendation in January of next year. Included in the packet is the staff report. The staff report includes each of the four proposed amendments, summaries of the amendments, code sections to be amended, and the proposed amendment language. These are the four items on the docket for updating. We have the, for item A, clarifying undergrounding utility requirements. Item B is clarifying first floor uses in the town center mixed-use subdistrict. Item C is clarifying open space requirements for manufactured home parks. And item D is adding a process for building height increases for specific industrial uses. We're jumping right into the first proposed amendment for the underground utilities. The code section to be amended is Tom Water Municipal Code, Chapter 17, Section 12 to 100, and that's the general design standards for, general design standards for underground utilities. Again, we are clarifying the requirement that new and existing utilities shall be installed underground. And then we also added a deviation process. On this slide, underlined is every, is the new proposed language. As you can see, it is quite extensive. We added a purpose, applicability, and a deviation subsection to the section of code. Down below at the very bottom is what the code used to say. Our second item, or item B, is amending first floor uses in the town center mixed-use subdistrict, which is Tom Water Municipal Code, Chapter 18, Section 2350. We are clarifying the allowed uses for first-floor development and mixed-use, both residential The intent of the town center mixed use is to create a pedestrian-type atmosphere and to attract pedestrians. So here, we have the code, and what we did is we clarified more uses or allowed uses to include professional services, medical clinics, child daycare centers, child mini daycare centers. Question?
What's the distinction between a child daycare center and a mini daycare center? What's the, like...
It's, it's, the difference is the number of children. It's actually laid out in the state law, and we've adopted it as part of our definition. I can't remember the exact breakdown if it's for eight or under 10.
Moving on to our third item is the open space requirement for manufactured home parks. As the code is currently written, manufactured home parks that are not subject to land division would not be required to provide open space. It's very unclear when open space is required. So our amendment is to clarify that manufactured home parks that aren't subject to a subdivision or land division process are required to provide open space. The next few slides kind of shows an example of how it is unclear. So if we were to go into section, Tom Water Municipal Code, Chapter 184960F, for park and open space area requirements, it says new development and the mobile home, mobile home park zone district shall set aside land for park and open space area as specified in Tom Water Municipal Code 1712210 and 1842130. 1842130 is park and open space area standards for development without divisions of land, which currently does not specify manufactured home parks. Chapter 1712210 is the park and open space area standards for division of land. So that's standards for parks that are being subdivided. So our focus is really going to be clarifying the process outlined in 1842130. So 1842130, as it is clearly written, states new residential development in which the majority of the dwelling units will be multifamily dwellings or rooming houses or five or more dwelling units as row houses or townhouses, and the land is not being divided, a minimum of 15% of the growth site area shall be set aside for a park and open space area. It is unclear whether or not this applies to manufactured home parks. So our proposed amendment language is to subsection E, which does, or 1A, which does include the language for manufactured home park development, and in F, that also includes manufactured home park with five or more dwelling units. So there's two situations for manufactured home parks. Wouldn't be subject to land division, so it's for parks that have five or less, or five or more. So it's really, it's pertinent to define that manufactured home parks developments that aren't subject to subdivision are still subject to open space requirements. And for our last proposed amendment, we have building heights over 65 feet for specific industrial uses. That's an amendment to Tom Water Municipal Code, Chapter 18, Section 2440, light industrial zone district conditional uses. We're also amending Tom Water Municipal Code, Chapter 182540, heavy industrial zone districts, and Tom Water Municipal Code, Chapter 1856110, which is conditional use permits. This is one amendment, but there are multiple sections of code that need to be amended as part of this process. Through this amendment, we are establishing a conditional use permit for specific industrial uses that are to exceed 65 feet in both the light industrial and heavy industrial zoning districts. Apparently, there is not a process for if a development proposal wants to exceed that 65-feet height limit. So these are our proposed amendment language. So in the light industrial district, we added subsection G, which says maximum building heights may be exceeded upon the approval of a hearing examiner and a conditional use permit. It outlines the minimum conditions for the conditional use permit in Tom Water Municipal Code 1856110B. We have proposed amendments to the heavy industrial zoning district, which adds subsection J, which is the same thing, outlining a process and specific requirements for the conditional use permit found in that same section of code, Chapter 1856110B. And then here, we have the conditional use permit requirements or minimum conditions. There is a total of nine conditions a proposal must meet to get approved for the conditional use permit for a height increase. So on the screen with sections 1 through 9, they are all new and proposed. Did any of the Planning Commission have questions or comments on the nine requirements? Next steps, we will meet with the General Government Committee, who are meeting on January 10. We will have a city work session January 23, and consideration is scheduled for February 6 of next year.
Questions, remarks? I had a quick one back on, I think it was your slide 16, slide 14. And if you could just clarify, I think I heard you say five or less and five or more of the manufactured homes within a particular park, and it seems like that might be confusing if somebody is doing five. So did I misunderstand that? Is it...
So here in our code, it says with five, five or more dwelling units, and the land is not being divided, a minimum of 15% of the growth site area shall be set aside.
Okay.
And then down here in subsection F?
Five or more, okay. So if you're less than five, then you don't. Okay.
It pretty much matches the ballpark I'm going to...
Great. Great.
I was just...
Very good. Okay. Thank you. Other, other questions, remarks, particularly the new language, proposed language, I should say, proposed language? Give it some time.
Let me check.
Thanks, Erica. At this point, what I'll do is ask if staff have heard from anybody, either by email or letters or phone calls, or in other ways, on, on the proposed changes for any or all of the four proposed amendments?
We haven't received any emails or responses from people.
Okay. All right. Commission has had a chance to ask questions. Let's see, is there anyone online here? There's nobody in the room from the public, but if anybody's online that would like to publicly testify on this particular amendment? Freedom. If you would, I see Mr. Tuanyo again from the Jolt. If, if you would like to testify on this particular item, our 2023 annual housekeeping amendments and ordinance 2023-012, please state your name and your address and your affiliation, All right, it looks like you probably don't want to make a remark. Okay. Thanks for being here. Let's see, I will then declare that our public hearing on the final docket for 2023 annual housekeeping amendments, ordinance number O-2023-012, is hereby closed. And we can discuss some more if we like, or we can move to a vote. Votes can be either to recommend to council to approve our, this set of amendments, to modify the ordinance, or you can recommend the council approve a, a modified ordinance, or we can recommend denial. Suppose we could also recommend further discussion, too, but... Vice Chair Tobias.
Vice Chair Tobias, I would like to move that we, move that we forward a recommendation for approval to the city council on ordinance number O-2023-012, final docket for the 2023 annual housekeeping amendments.
Have seconds?
Great. Commissioner Varela. It's been moved and seconded that we forward for a recommendation of approval to the council for our final docket for 2023 annual housekeeping amendments, ordinance number O-2023-012. Final chance for comment. And commission, okay. All right. All in favor of the motions, please say aye.
Aye.
Not actually hearing those votes, but okay. Any opposed? Great. Motion carries. Everybody? Let's move on to our next one. Do I need to run through the whole process again? Welcome, everybody. Okay. Good thing I have this nice handy-dandy sheet. All right. Thanks, everybody, for being here for the second part of our public hearing on, tonight, on our final docket for 2023 comprehensive plan amendments proposed. I'm Elizabeth Robbins, Chair of the Planning Commission. We have a quorum here present with the rest of the commission, both in person and on, online. We, again, are an advisory body to the city council. We don't make direct decisions that affect ordinance or code. The purpose of our hearing tonight is to hear testimony on the proposed ordinance number O-2023-002, the final docket for 2023 comprehensive plan amendments. And our procedure will be that, once I open the public hearing, we will move to a staff report. The commission can then ask questions of staff once the staff report is done. Then we'll take public testimony on, on the topic, and then I'll close, once everyone, if anyone, has made a public comment, then I'll close the public hearing. And again, our, anybody wishing to speak needs to speak clearly and, and into a microphone so we can capture your comments and thoughts. We'll ask you to identify yourself with your name, your address, and any affiliation, and that any remarks be specifically addressed to our final docket for our comprehensive plan amendments. Again, if anybody's speaking, I'll give you three minutes each, avoiding repetitive comments or anything of that nature. We don't appear to have a large numbers of people here or online, so I don't think we have any trouble there, and I don't really expect any unruly behavior. we have any trouble there, and I don't really expect any unruly behavior. So our, again, our topic is ordinance number O 2023-002, our final docket for 2023 comprehensive plan amendments. And and again, our purpose is to hear public testimony on on that topic, on those amendments. I will go ahead and open our public hearing, and we'll start with our staff report. Erica, again.
Yep. Right, thank you. So our first amendment for the comprehensive, the first proposed item for the comprehensive plan amendment is the Old Highway 99 corridor plan. This proposal is a comprehensive plan amendment to adopt it. Old Highway 99 is a major transportation corridor connecting the city of Tomater with communities to the south. Commercial and residential use have crept up, extending peak commute trip times and lengthening vehicle queues. Studies suggest that we expand the highway to two lanes in either direction and include upgrades such as bike lanes and pedestrian walkways.
Great, do you want us to hold comments till we're all done, or do you want to till you're all done and then?
Yeah.
Yeah, go on, why don't you go on ahead, and then we'll come back to.
Okay. So the Old Highway 99 corridor plan examines multimodal safety and mobility issues and incorporates land use, environmental, and transportation considerations as necessary to determine implementation strategies and future project estimates. The Old Highway 99 was first assigned in the 1920s as the original north to south highway running along the west coast of the United States. In Washington State, the corridor spurred growth for commerce for more than 40 different communities as goods and travelers would quickly navigate from one city to the next. This route has lost many of its once daily travelers to Interstate 5, but the corridor still offers identity that is closely linked to many early west coast cities, including a more direct route to the city of Tenino. So at a local level, the Old Highway 99 connects South Hurson County, Bush Ferry, and the Olympia Regional Airport to the city of Tomater and Interstate 5. Use has crept upward in the recent years, and again, extending peak commute hours and wait times. The city of Tomater invested in planning studies and improvements to the north along the Capitol Boulevard corridor. The results of the studies are found on the Capitol Boulevard Boulevard corridor planning project page on the city website. In 2016, the city updated the transportation element of its comprehensive plan. This process determined two lanes are required in either direction on Old Highway 99 from 79th Avenue to 88th Avenue to meet increasing demands of traffic. We met with Mary Heather Ames last time, she was a guest speaker, and explained we are only widening the portions within the city of Tomater limits, and identified where those are at specifically. We also talked about bike lanes and pedestrian safety on both sides of the highway by the airport. And the Old Highway 99 corridor plan addresses development and improvement of Old Highway 99 from 79th to 93rd Avenue. There are currently no bike lanes along the stretch corridor and sidewalks, only in a few locations. The city asked for feedback on the corridor in the fall of 2020 using a platform called MapChurnair that allowed users to provide comments in in addition to a traditional survey. The five main improvements people wanted to see included bicycle lanes and path sidewalks, reduced traffic congestion, intersection safety, and street lighting. So that includes the staff report for the Old Highway 99 plan. Again, we did meet with Mary Heather Ames last time, and she answered specific questions. We did have questions about the lighting along Old Highway 99 and the bike paths and the specific location of where this project would happen.
All right. Want us to move on to the next portion?
So the second city sponsored amendment is to the 2024-2029 six-year capital facility plan update. The purpose of this update is to address Growth Management Act requirements to update the city's six years, six-year capital facility plan with new data and analysis and confirm implementation actions every two years. It was last updated in 2021. The capital facility plan is also an element of the comprehensive plan, is an element of the comprehensive plan. Yep. The city council approved the final docket on February 21st, 2023. Staff from Transportation and Engineering, Water Resources and Sustainability, and Parks and Recreation reviewed the previous six years capital facilities plan to determine what specific amendments were needed to update the plan. We met with all of the departments, and they gave a presentation on the proposed plan and projects throughout the summer and the public. And so the we talked and discussed financial plans for sanitary sewer, storm drain, and water funds on July 20th, 2023. The planning commission met for a briefing to the six-year capital facilities plan on July 11th to address financial plans for the general government and transportation funds, and a briefing on August 8th to address financial plans for the sanitary sewer, storm drain, and water funds.
All right. Did did staff receive any public input on this part, on this ordinance and proposed?
We received one phone call from WashDOT, emails from WashDOT, saying that they may have comments, but they didn't let them know that they can review the process. They didn't, they requested an extension, and they didn't provide us with anything related, but that is the only comment.
Okay. Thank you. What's the, what would be the, will they have another opportunity, I guess, at council? That would be their.
In my response to their additional email, I let them know the public hearing was going to be occurring next day. They didn't get their comments to the commission for consideration or their concerns on the council after you've had.
If they have any, okay. Okay, good, we haven't foreclosed them that at least. All right. Good thing for that. Let's see, have, do planning commission members have any questions for Erica on this topic? Commissioner Tobias?
Where's the city out with conversion from septic to sewer for within the city limits and within the UGA? Do we have data on that?
Ongoing process. We do a prioritization based on whether or not the septic systems are functioning, not causing health problems. If there are causing such issues, then we work with the property owner to do a sewer connection. In some cases, we have some larger older projects that we've been working with grant funding and other things to try to make that conversion easier. We're not actively going out trying to put in sewer just to address those issues yet. That's pretty expensive. So we're really focusing on if there's a true health concern, we'll address that.
All right, I'm not seeing other, oh.
Just one quick question for the Transit Highway 99. Was part of that study assessing any possible model making because we're only going to be expanding part of that that may have been incorporated? Would that be a factor that would need to be considered if we're only expanding part of it, not the entirety?
It's hard understanding, I think you're speaking to the fact that it's at the bottom, it's not four lanes, but it's towards the top. I mean, four lanes probably north you get.
But it wouldn't be uniform, so at some point it would have to narrow back down.
I believe if, when the transportation manager, Mary Heather Ames, was here the last time, she mentioned that they had looked at that as part of the projected growth over the next 20 years of the plant, and that that wasn't an issue that they identified with the current growth projections and what was currently on the ground.
So it was assessed, does it? Fantastic, thank you.
And a kind of a follow on to that question, there's, are there projects in the works already that are, would address that kind of a concern?
Actually, I don't know the answer to that. I'm looking, I'm trying to see if people, but I'm not sure.
Okay, it'd be good to maybe have that be part of the context if it comes up again. Questions, other questions? Let's see, let's go to, we have Mr. Chuanio again there. If you would like to address the planning commission on this topic, on our proposed city of Tomater comprehensive plan amendments, please, please let us, please state your name and your address and your affiliation, and then you'll have three minutes on your to talk if you'd like to. I'm not seeing him on mute, so I'm assuming he doesn't wish to address us. All right, again, thanks, thanks for taking the time to be here, though. All right. I hereby close our public hearing on our 2023 annual city of Tomater comprehensive plan amendments, the final docket for ordinance number O 2023-002. Any final comments, discussion from the commission? Okay. Thanks, Erica. Now we're looking for again either a motion to approve or modify or deny. Commissioner Verella?
Commissioner Verella, I'm moving forward ordinance number 02023002, final docket for 2023 comprehensive plan amendments to the city council for approval.
Okay.
Commissioner Kurt Patrick, seconding. All right, it's been moved and approved and seconded, sorry, to to advance our recommendation to city council to approve our 2023 annual city of Tomater comprehensive plan amendments, final docket for ordinance number O 2023-002. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Great. Any opposed? Okay, hearing any opposition, and so the motion is approved and advances for city council. Okay, thanks, everybody. Thanks especially for the cheat sheet. Okay, okay, I'm flipping around here, back to, back to the main stack. Very good, I guess, let's see, our next meeting will be the 9th of January, and Brad ran through our topics. I can call right off, but that's fine. Okay, that could take longer than our usual amount of time.
Underword essay with vocabulary words and all.
Fight show with pictures.
Is there a contest for most calories consumed? All right. Okay, let's see then, that's, that's pretty much it for tonight, everybody. Looking for a, if we want to continue or if we want to adjourn. Commissioner Tobias?
Vice Chair Tobias, I motion we adjourn. Second?
That was Commissioner Verella seconding. All right, everybody, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I jumped again a little bit, but okay, our meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Holidays.
Thank you all.